Okay, so welcome everyone. It is being recorded. Um, so in order to get out of the building, you could go out the back of the room and down either the hallway in either direction to an exit. Um, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, we'll keep the agenda as published. Okay, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Does anyone have any? Hi Liam, Murphy, you want to go ahead?
Yes, good evening. How are you tonight? So I'm just following up um for our last uh hearing where we had made a number of options for the rezoning of Hannaford Drive. Following that meeting, I did uh prepare and sent a Paul another revision that uh was the adaptive reuse provision just for uh effectively green businesses. We'd like to try to get on your agenda as soon as we can in order to uh move this forward. As you know, the process of first amending uh the zoning and then once the zoning is amended applying just takes a significant period of time and um Tesla would like to proceed with this site if if as soon as it can. So I'm I'm just appearing to ask that if possible, we try to get on uh your agenda as soon as possible so that a uh an amendment and a report can be prepared uh that then can be worn for a hearing uh and then to, you know, to kick off the process to move it forward.
Yes. Noted. Thank you. Um, thanks for sending that information to Paul. Any anything else from anyone? Okay, then we can move on to um announcements. Anyone have any?
A couple. Did anyone listen to NPR a couple of days ago through with regard to the roundabout city?
Heard a lot. I have something else to report from NPR, but not that.
Well, it's a mea culpa moment because I was not too enamored with the idea of a roundabout and uh the NPR little quick was about um Carmel, Indiana, the hotspot of the United States, uh population a hundred thousand and they have one hundred and two roundabouts. And um and one traffic light. And uh it was fascinating. I I really became an advocate and I apologize for being negative about my uneducated vote about not not really liking the idea of a roundabout. Uh if you ever get a chance, Google. I think roundabouts, they call themselves the Roundabout City. And it's Carmel, Indiana, but uh quite uh quite something. The other uh thing, I don't know again if anyone saw this with regard to there was an article in Vermont Business Journal or something with regard to uh counties. And um what this this story is about was that one thousand six hundred and twenty-four counties that had at least twenty-five hundred homes with mortgages and forty-nine out of fifty were in the northeast, south and the west. And um these are equity-rich properties. Obviously, you know, paid significant part of their their mortgage. And the 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 towns, Duke's County, which is Martha's Vineyard, eighty-three percent. Chittenden County was eighty-two percent. And then two counties in Austin, Texas, seventy-nine and seventy-eight, Nantucket was seventy-eight. So it's pretty amazing that all the counties in the country that we are right up there as number two having paid off a significant part of our mortgages. I don't know what that means. I think, yeah, and I think that uh, yeah, I would say that's probably the the takeaway. But I was fascinated by that little ditty.
Yeah, very interesting.
So for whatever it's worth.
I had also from NPR, um and I sent this into excited texts to um or emails to Paul and to Jessica. Um, and this was a week ago that um during during our um IZ, um the city council was also creating the, I forget what their report was called, but the um basically trying to put a financial value on um natural resources, right? So that that parallel study that took place. Apparently, the Biden administration is, the White House is um working on creating natural capital accounts, which is going to be a federally like a a federally based system that's going to try using many resources to do exactly that. Um, so I just was very excited to hear that we tried and we have one way and I'm going to be very excited to watch what happens at a federal level. Um, and just kind of see where this goes. So that was great. And the second thing is um I'm putting a white roof on my house, people. I'm choosing the whitest roofing tile. So I'm doing my part. I don't know what it's going to look like. But you're welcome to drive by.
Spots on it.
Sorry.
Will you put a few black spots on it?
Well, there'll be solar panels, but yeah, no, do right, just to get some testing.
Yeah, I was thinking more the the aerial visual.
Oh, well, some people do to do temperature checks. You can, you can leave a little space and you can check the surface temperature. But yes, no, I am making that change and let's hope it um is becomes something people want to do and they don't see my house and say, oh, God.
Any other announcements?
I've got a couple. Um, one, the city council last week had a uh I guess a first reading of a uh proposed ordinance that would require that the principal heating source for new uh buildings as as of January first, twenty twenty-three uh would need to be uh from a carbon-free source. The hearing is going to be on September nineteenth. So um that's a big, um that was the the first major recommendation out of the Climate Action Committee and the council is can hold that hearing that day. So um encourage and invite um folks to participate and see what the what the council decides to do with that. So that's one big one. Okay, um, my other one's unrelated. So if you wanted to.
Does Burlington have that ordinance already?
Burlington passed that ordinance in about a year ago.
What has any any feedback on what their experience has been? Has it been?
Uh thus far, it the what the folks from our climate action task force have communicated, having talked with a few of the people and a city councillor from Burlington attended the first presentation to council on it has was that it's been relatively smooth. So yeah, I should say fairly smooth, not like there wasn't, there hasn't, they didn't report any major hitups with it.
So my question is, I'm really just about, and I thought I was going to bring it up later when we're talking about our comp plan stuff because there's so much being discussed there. I'm very curious because I don't know if we've been in a situation before when a comp plan is starting and a task force is working on ordinances. So I'm, I I would like to learn how we will work together. It's very exciting. It sounds like they're going to get a lot of really difficult work done and approved with ordinances and then we our job will be. So anyway, when the time is right.
Yeah, well, I mean, ju- just at the very broadest level, also on September nineteenth, the Climate Action Plan Task Force is going to be presenting their draft climate action plan to the council. And so that plan uh includes this proposed ordinance and they felt that they wanted to push this piece forward first as being the first priority. I think there there's a tremendous opportunity for the work for you all to do to integrate in the findings of the Climate Action Plan in your comprehensive plan. So it's really the timing in in some ways is sort of perfect because you will have enough lead time to work on that and incorporate that study and the various other transportation and um, you know, s- other studies have been done over the last few years.
And I have like a technical question, which which I don't know who I'm supposed to ask. Is it something I ask here and we talk about it? So everyone, or do I just as a resident ask the task force or is I just don't, I I'd like to understand in Burlington or wherever else when they have this ordinance. Do, does that mean the buildings, for example, would have like no gas lines going in at all or like?
Not necessarily. So the the requirement in Burlington and what's proposed here is that uh I believe it's it's the primary heat source. And it must be able, the primary heat source must be able to do eighty-five percent of the heating of the building.
Okay, so a resident could still opt to have a gas stove if they want to or whatever.
A gas stove, a gas backup system. Um, what the task force members who did some research into this have found is that in many cases, um builders and homeowners have opted not to do it because if they're not doing it for the heating, then they don't decide to do it just to bring in a gas stove, but there's nothing that prohibits that.
Right, okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Um, my other announcement uh is that we, and I might have typed this, but um today we welcomed a gentleman by the name of Marty Gillies as our Development Review Planner One. So we're very excited to have an additional um person on board.
South Dakota.
Uh, well, went to UVM, went out to South Dakota for a year. Found that he really found the work really interesting, but didn't want to be out in South Dakota. So came back here and um we got to snag him. So we're very excited. All right.
Super good.
That's what I've got.
When's Kelsey coming back?
Uh, she is slated to come back in September.
September.
Yeah.
That probably.
Falling over each other.
Well, that will bring us to the staffing that we were at two months ago.
Bear it around the office.
It's uh, I've been able to speak as loudly as I choose to at sometimes.
Yourself?
Exactly.
Well, hopefully it won't be so lonely. Um. So I guess we can move on. So um I guess I I guess Liam's gone, but um so generally, um, the items on the agenda for tonight were brought forward by commissioners. They were things we had talked about and are in line with kind of our work, our main work task of the comp plan. But we had considered the bringing back the Tesla item, but we had not received information before we had to make the agenda. So probably should have said that earlier. So it wasn't that we were ignoring that issue. It was just that we didn't have what we needed.
So we'll go on to maybe the next agenda.
Yeah, so something like.
That's what I would be anticipating, yeah. And also in um, I was there for a week in between those two times, so I didn't have any opportunity even had it arrive to really um do any kind of assessment for you on it.
And and I'm sorry that I had to leave the meeting early last meeting because it was a very interesting conversation. I'm assuming that whatever we see is not strictly Tesla-related. It's the concept of retrofitting, right?
The idea.
Right, and that's that's, you know, they can propose whatever they want.
Right.
Your responsibility will be to be looking at something in its context. Otherwise, that's that's spot zoning. So
Right.
It will be.
I kind of heard that at the end of the meeting. What uh what exactly are we talking about? There's a different zoning for retrofitting. And you're talking about applying that to the Hannaford building.
Yes, essentially. So there is a, there is a tool that some communities use, and I don't want to go too much because this isn't on the agenda for tonight, but there's a tool that many communities use, especially it's been used in sort of um more built-up cities uh to allow for uh the 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 planning term is adaptive reuse. So a building that wouldn't necessarily be allowed to be built today, um under today's rules, is recognized for being a different form of building. And so they allowed activities there can be different than what might otherwise be around it. So for example, uh, a few years ago, I was out in Portland, May, uh Oregon, and there was an old elementary school that had been sold to uh to the to the private sector. It was in the middle of a residential neighborhood, just like the Chamberlain School. And it had become a hotel and brewery. And so the adaptive reuse of that space, normally in the middle of a single-family home neighborhood, you wouldn't have a brewery and a and a big hotel, but that building you know, is a hundred-year-old building that would be well-suited to something different. That was the concept that Liam was presenting is you might not allow a building kind of like that today in that same form, but maybe it could be allowed to have some different life to it.
Okay, good.
Okay, I understand that it's not because of Tesla that we're taking this up, but I just have a question. Um if a citizen, you know, came forward with a request, would we grant them, you know, a fast track? Or is this because it's a unique situation and an opportunity for the city? I just want to get clear what our protocol is and
I think part of, yeah.
And I assume, I don't want to, I didn't suddenly have to pause it, embarrassing, but I assume it's because opportunity. But is that not?
Yeah, I mean, I think the 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 schedule of of things is up to you all and what you decide to move forward. I know that over the years you have given us the guidance to say when opportunities present themselves that are aligned with the city's goals to bring them forward to.
Yeah.
I mean, that's fundamentally what what they are. And then
Yeah.
Our collective job is to make sure that it is not looking at one individual or one company or one property's interest, but the overall is this advancing a policy and to the benefits the community overall.
Yeah, I think that's important to to put on the record that it's the opportunity.
Yeah.
Can I, sorry, Jessica, guys, and um I apologize. I meant to send this in and didn't get it into you in time, but it kind of along what Ted was just asking. I I just wanted to clarify, and again, we don't have to do it tonight because I didn't put it in this on the agenda, but at some point, just get clarification on what our process is when we get requests, because I'm thinking back, we have a couple of requests way in the past that I don't know that we ever got addressed. Um, so whether it's a citizen or an ed business entity, you know, what what is our protocol for doing that? It seems, it seems like that's gotten a little grand. I realize we've had a lot on our plate, but um, I don't know if we could get some clarity in that process so that people coming to us. You know, they they know what the expectation is.
Yeah, so we do have like a written like policy on that. And maybe maybe that makes sense to circulate, so we can all just take another look at it.
Yeah.
Well, and I would imagine that when this is on our agenda that next week, one of our decisions might be this belongs, this conversation belongs on our your plan, yours plan.
Yeah.
I mean, that could be the outcome of that conversation.
Yes, I agree. Okay, so let's move on to item five, which is a discussion of each planning commissioner's vision for the city. Um, so this seemed to make a lot of sense for, you know, the work that we're doing with the comp plan and just kind of our prep for our meeting with the city council that's coming up. Um, so Ted's idea was that we'd each start with, you know, just five minutes each to talk through what our vision is. And I'll put that in mind. I don't know if anyone wants to go first.
Look at me.
Ted, maybe?
Okay, um, yeah, this is just vision. This is like not in in order. First of all, I do like the vision that we have in the existing plan. I'm not saying throw those out. Um, but this would be sort of in addition. So I certainly endorse what what Duncan and I and and Jessica had put forth earlier. Um, but in addition to that, um, my vision would be bus ridership culturally acceptable. Um, city becomes known for something unique. Uh, folks entering the city clearly realize they are in South Burlington. I still hear people say, oh, I didn't realize where South Burlington start, even though there are signs. I don't know the answer to how to how to clarify that.
And what's so boo?
Yeah, thanks. Um, anyway, um uh creative, affordable housing types. Bikers and pedestrians feel safe walking or riding throughout the city day and night. Uh, over, I'd like, my vision is an overabundance of trees and plantings. And um, sorry, I guess I'm going too fast. I apologize. And um let me see, uh respecting the special qualities of existing neighborhoods. Um, I have one and a half minutes left. Um, a city public pool. And uh work towards housing in creative areas throughout the city. So, tip.
Great. Who wants to go next? Should we go this way?
Sure.
Paul, do you want to go?
Okay, I'll go. But I must warn you in advance that it's not a happy vision.
Okay.
Okay, this is, this is a dystopian vision. Been working on for a while. And I think it started with uh the idea, well, I'm I'm like fifty years in in the future, not twenty, so. Um, and um, I can see um cider mill, for example, becoming a tenement with four families per house. Clotheslines between the houses. I mean, you know, this happens. It happens from the nineteenth century to the twentieth century to the twenty-first century. And um, and I don't see the wave of people um that uh continually seem to be in need of housing. Uh, stopping anytime soon. Population boom is enormous. So um, the other thing I see in recently is um no airport. So I think planes uh are not going to make it in the future. I think they're going to be too expensive, too destructive of the environment. And really not necessary with the communications technology that we'll have in the future. So um, so I would see Burlington International Airport um digging up the runways and, you know, planting crops, you know, I think that might be a a really good open area for fruits and vegetables and everything to feed all of us. So I think those are the biggies. The other one is that um I think in the future, and it seems to be starting now. I think that water is going to be our biggest problem. I think the planning commission is going to put a lot of a lot of work into, how do we get water in twenty-seventy now? So things are starting to dry up pretty pretty fabulously already out West and um, our rainfall is below average almost every year. So uh, you know, the, if the lakes um lakes dry up and the ocean rises, then uh, you know, we're going to be sitting next to a lot of saltwater that we can't drink. So I think those are the big three for me.
Those are interesting.
Yeah.
I love creativity and thoughtfulness, like. Going around, around, Monica?
Okay.
Or we could come back to this.
So, and I, I mean, I'm pretty much going to say the same concepts now and in our next agenda point, but the word that just keeps coming to me is dignity. Um, I hope that in our work we look inside the home um and the place of work for everyone who's in South Burlington. We can't do much for the people that are passing through. We can't control what car they're driving. Um, and I think we've spent a lot of time trying to make sure that we look pretty for them. And I'd like to turn our comp plan inside and make sure that everyone, whether they're monthly living expenses, five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars, lives in dignity. Um, and what does that mean? I think we can explore that. A quiet night's sleep is critical. Um, safety. Being able to move without having to have a car. Um, so really exploring the concept of dignity. And when I look at our um, our comp plan uh vision, it really doesn't, to me, seem to go there enough. So I'm I'm not a person of words. I found that one conceptually. I hope I'm getting the message across, but I'd like to um, yeah, explore that more. And I did happen to find that Los Angeles is doing something in their comprehensive plan development. And this, the timing might be in the past, but they're, they're um working on a nine-point plan um for something they're calling design for di- for dignity. So I actually had the word first and I was searching, like, can I find anything? And then up this comes. But one of the things as an example that they're doing is um they have a goal, their goal will be to promote architectural ingenuity alongside social benefits, including affordability, safety, resilience, more efficient use of resources and the ability to age in place. Uh, and they're actually, and this is something I would love to see us do, um inviting architects to participate in a competition or just a, you know, a a brainstorming session. Entrance will consider a range of scenarios, including additions to existing houses, ground up triplexes and fourplexes and new approaches to courtyard housing as well as the potential to subdivide or combine a single-family parcel um to unlock new solutions for housing affordability, which connects to some of what Paul Engels was saying. So um I I think that I can kind of just stop there, you know, I, because I think I'm going to agree with a lot of what everybody else has to say, but that's I think the unique angle that I'm going to be looking. And I'm sorry, it, there are ways to ta- attach that as well to our businesses and those who come into South Burlington to work here, that they um are treated with dignity and they have access to a dignified existence while they're here.
When you say dignity, would you, I think equity, is that, am I?
I think just every, I I think that if one feels dignified, one wants to stay. You know, where, whatever that means. So it, you know, if we're, if we're going to build if we're building housing and it's right next to something where somebody just doesn't want to stay for all of us should want to live in every house that we look at considering building. We may all be in a five hundred dollar a month budget scenario someday, and we want to build and see things built that we would also want to live in. And would we want to be across from a a driveway where um trucks are dropping off overnight shipments at the loading dock all night? No. We need to li- live with dignity. Um, my father recently moved into Shelburne um Bay, Shelburne Bay, and you know, he and I hear the same motorcycles at four o'clock in the morning um on Shelburne Road because the noise carries, but that's that's difficult. So how can we design things if the housing is going to be there? How can we design it to give the person inside the dignity that they deserve?
Excellent. When I thought about vision for the city, I thought about, you know, we're we're a small suburban city. Um, we have some challenges and some pressures. Um, we we do have some really nice open space. Um, you know, the challenge is how do we conserve that? And how do we address the housing change? I mean, climate climate change, I think, is one of our biggest issues. It's everybody's biggest issue. Um, but also housing, we we are going to be a desirable place to live. Um, and I I would really like to see South Burlington become a regional leader in infill. Um, I I think that we are uniquely situated that we have some areas. Um, I think Shelburne Road and Wilson Road that we could, you know, hopefully do some really creative stuff. Um, to get a lot of housing in areas where people might want to live and would be very walkable. Um, you know, and then, you know, other development in other places, um, we just finished a ton of work on the PUDs. Um, you know, I I I, hopefully that comes to fruition. Um, I'd like to see, you know, I I know there's a lot of people who don't want to see any development in the green areas. I think that there will be some development there just because of the pressures, but hopefully it's very smart. Um, and we can still retain as much open space as possible. Um, and a little plug for Ted here, parks, green space. Um, I think that's such an important part of our city. Um, I I just think of the Underwood property, what a what a gem that is. To be able to walk along that property and look at the view. Um, you know, and also um, public transit. Um, that's one of my biggest beefs. Every time I go by one of the buses and see nobody on it. Um, that's one of my biggest beefs. Every time I go by one of the buses and see nobody on it. Um, you know, if there's some way that we can get, and again, this would have to be a regional thing, but. You know, how can we work to get public transit so that people wanna use it? You know, they wanna get on the bus and take it to work. Um, you know, that's not an easy question, but I, I really would love to see that happen. Um, you know, that thing that was uh, the presentation you had in the. Last meeting, I wasn't there, but I read it in the packet. Most people live within ten miles of where they work. If they could get on a bus. Um, yeah, that would be great. Um. What I really don't wanna see is I don't wanna see us become an exclusive place to live. Um, my, my concern is it's, you know, as Ted mentioned, you know, that, that statistic about Chittenden County. Um, you know, that's, that's, that's a little scary. Um. You know, I, I, I look at my kids and I want them to be able to afford a house here someday. Um, so. Um, but, and also, you know. I wanna see South Burlington continue to be a vibrant place to live, to work, to recreate. You know, the, the things that make it so attractive now, I wanna see us try to retain those. So.
That's good stuff. And I think a, a lot of what I wrote down, things that have already been mentioned, um, I must say, I did try to. Uh, vision what I wanted to see in the future more than um. Visioning some detrimental things that might happen, like. Um, so you know, I wrote down that um. You know, my vision is that we have an increased quality of life and we've become more resilient to climate change. Um, specifically with better water quality, reduced flooding and um. Being more resilient to drought cuz we're gonna, I mean, I just see this being, having more flooding and drought, um, so for us to like work towards being able to deal with that better. Um. I want him, I want us to be more bike and walk safe. Um, and if possible, with less car trips going through our city. You know, so I think that that couples with some of the like public transit um, that's been mentioned. I'm really excited about city center. Like, when I, when I got here, I went to library and then took the book back out to my car and just like spent a few minutes, just like. I don't know, just like looking around at the parts of city center that have already. Kind of, I don't wanna use the word developed because it can be negative, but like that have kind of been created and, and exist already and. And it's really exciting to like, kind of try to picture what, what it'll look like when more people are living here and more things to do. Um, and I think things that we should be. Kind of taking a proactive approach to, to make sure it happens is to make sure that we have enough parks, paths and, and connections. And those connections might be between neighborhoods and, you know, some of them might be with cars, but. Um, you really to have all those connections that we need between different um, neighborhoods and parts of the city. And to retain and protect our natural areas, um, so that we will continue to have those and all those benefits. You know, Monica, you brought up the natural capital and I, I really do think that, you know, part of how we get to be more resilient to climate change and water quality and flooding is by. You know, protecting natural areas um. And our farms, so, so I think it's. Like, you know. Maybe, maybe an idealized vision, but things that we really need to be thinking about to get there.
It's amazing how. Instead of we are saying, I don't wanna say the same thing, but sort of.
Yeah, and then. Maybe in different ways.
Yeah, right. It's pretty amazing, I think.
Um, we did get two of Michael's, um, it, it's not, it's, um. You do have. Yeah, so I don't know, did everybody get a chance to see what Michael had sent over?
That's right.
No, no, it's, it's okay, um. I don't know if it's like exactly concise. Um, it's actually much more related to the comp plan specifically with like notes on.
Yeah, I thought that fit.
The goals, so maybe it makes sense to talk about that.
For the climate change, yes, I did read that, sorry.
Oh, okay, so we did, and it, and it is more related to, I think, our next agenda item that's specific to the comp plan.
Yeah, I think this is three bullet. His three bullet points were um, refocus the entire plan on climate change mitigation and adaptation. And necessary land use change to support this focus on the preservation and expansion of open space for food production, agricultural, community garden, recreation. Uh, silver culture and the health and safety of South Burlington residents and make South Burlington a refugee re- uh, receiving city. This will advance diversity, vibrancy, innovation and creativity. That's sort of the most succinct summary of the things that he highlighted.
And I mean, we have time for discussion, so I mean, we didn't need to just state what we stated and then be done.
I, I think, you know, my good friend to my left, um, you know, brings up a point about. You know, not looking like this count, this comp plan, the old one was looking twenty years out. I get, I assume we're looking again for twenty years out. But again, looking fifty or a hundred really is interesting, but. What scary and interesting about, you know, I was, I was driving the other day. Been thinking with all the fires out west and just, just, you know, things that are going on. It's that Vermont may very well become the breadbasket. You know, we may have a revitalization of farms, you know, if there's, if there's any room for farms, the solar panels or, but. You know, it, it's very possible. New England may be what the Midwest has been, maybe not for wheat and so on, but for egg, they're, they're killing their. Their cattle, you know, because they can't water or they can't feed them sufficiently and so on. So scary comment, you know. Certain things, I mean, obviously we gotta keep an eye to that, but that's so far out, it's sort of difficult, but. Maybe be privy of, you know, water conservation. Who would have thought being conserving water, but we're on a well. So we're sort of conserving as much as we can, rain barrels and so on, but you know, maybe start thinking about that for the community. It may be. A little early to think, but anyway. So that was a, a very interesting piece. And your equi- I'm sorry, your, your point, Monica, about dignity. I think that really ties in to really, anyways, what we're all talking about. We want. I look at dignity as someone going to the park. Whether they live on the Miracle Mile on Spear Street or whether they live at Farrell. You don't know, there's, they're on this, they're in the same park. You know, and, and access to services and so on and so forth. So I think that's a really neat idea and with that one word can capture a lot of. A lot of things. Okay, that's my two cents.
I had um, something, so I um. I think Duncan called out infill and, you know, basically Paul Ingles was talking about it as well. I feel very strongly that we're gonna have to. I don't know that for the comp plan, we can set goals to. We're gonna have to decide if our one zoning is appropriate anymore. Um, and I don't know if we make decisions before comp plan to say, no, we don't. Or if we set as a goal for the comp plan that we, we head into that place. Um, where we start to talk about that. I think it's a very big conversation. A number of us live in R one in, in, on the, at this table, and I think, given. What we're seeing happen, it's um, the responsible plan to address it. So I think that's gonna be. Cha- a challenge.
A couple of quick notes, um. Ted, to your question from a minute.
I'm not done.
Ted, oh, sorry.
I thought you were responding to that one.
I was gonna respond to both of the questions.
Cuz I had, I had two other things, but I'll, go ahead.
So just quickly to, there, there's. Um, we use the twenty, twenty-year planning horizon because it is a timeframe that we can sort of conceive of. Um, fairly straightforwardly in terms of what we wanna accomplish. There's nothing that says that, that we can't also be saying, and here's where we're looking fifty or a hundred years into the future. And if that's a desire of the planning commission to be contemplating, especially in, in the, in the realm of something like climate change where we know things are changing regardless. Even if all actions that could possibly be taken are taken today, that there are things that will change. There's nothing wrong with doing that. And then.
Twenty is the new fifty.
To your question or, or, or note, Monica, yes, the comprehensive plan is the place to lay out, not necessarily the specifics of. We're gonna change our one zoning to X, but to identify that. Either as a whole or in various strategic places in the city. That you are, if you are looking for change in existing neighborhoods, that's, this is the place to do that because this is the policy framework for future regulations. So uh, I would say, you know, that is, this is the time to, to initiate that discussion.
So.
At a, at a policy, at a, at a, at a vision level and a policy level.
LDRs, but.
Um, not LDRs, but if you're not doing it now, it's not, the, the plan should be setting that vision first, I guess, is what I would say.
So that's, that in itself is a, it might almost be interesting to get your sense of what a timeline looks like. On that one question, or, and are there other questions? Um, that can be drivers for. The rest of the comp plan. I mean, that, that's a big statement. If we're gonna make a statement like that and, and. If we, if the majority all agree, um, that will drive the comp plan in a, you know, different way. It means. I, I don't know what, what we will all decide, so it, maybe. There are some key, and maybe by the time, is the meeting on the thirteenth with the, is it, was that confirmed for the city council?
Not been concerned, confirmed. I think we are gonna try again for the twenty seventh.
So maybe we have some kind of goal of like, having a discussion before that date to say. We're having this initial thought and we all seem to either. Want to do it, or we don't wanna do it, or here's what our concerns are and maybe. Address it at that meeting and maybe there's some other equally um. De- decisive decisions that can impact so much of the plan, so. Um, so then the other, um, the, the two other comments I was gonna make was, um, I'm calling it post zoning cuz I don't know what else to call it, but I just, every time I drive on San Remo Drive, it drives me crazy. Because what an amazing street that would be to have multi-use housing. And I mean, it backs onto a neighborhood. It just drives me crazy when I'm driving past businesses that um. Have broken jagged fences on the sidewalks and don't care. Um, so I understand that the business, the, the um. In, um, I don't know the differences, but the, the industry that's there, if, if they um, sell or vacate. The same business can't go there, right? It has to convert to a um, commercial.
Um, is that a question?
Uh, yes, because it leads to.
So it's in the form-based code and the way that the form-based code reads is there's a. Um, all, broadly speaking, all uses are permitted unless they're prohibited, which is the opposite of the rest of the city. In what it says though, is there's a longer list of things that are not permitted in buildings that don't meet the code. That makes sense? So if you could build a new building, and this is sort of the philosophy of a form-based code. If you could build a brand, a, a new building that met all of the standards of um, lot, uh, frontage and height and doors. Then you can put the use that you want in it. You will likely not get certain uses because car dealerships don't wanna be in a space that has a door every thirty feet or something like that. The way that the form-based code deals with buildings like San Remo Drive is there's a longer list of prohibited uses. Um, that at a car dealer, a, a car, auto repair can stay in auto repair, but it couldn't become a machine shop. For example.
Okay, so, so with that in mind, I will be interested in seeing how, I'm gonna stick with this phrase, post zoning, how we can. Look at other areas of the city. And do we have the ability to say when that particular current use leaves, you know, changes, whatever sells, does not renew their lease. A new. Set of prohibitive um, uses or something kicks in. So I don't know, the, I'm not looking for an answer right now, but. It's kind of, how can we step, how can we help in the, this comp plan? How can we help? Move towards with every lease that expires with every business that, that decides to sell. Um, and then the last thing is, um, I am seeing a lot more e-bikes all the time on our roads and I think it's great. And I'm very concerned, um, and this is something I think can be a pivotal discussion early too. Uh, Swift Street, for example, and I do not blame people for wanting to drive on Swift Street. If you are trying to commute. From wherever in the southeast quadrant to somewhere on Shelburne Road, you don't necessarily have the time every morning to take the bike path. You're going to get on Swift Street and you're gonna do it. And it is so dangerous. There are so many blind spots, but if you have an e-bike and you gotta be somewhere, they, I would do the same thing. So I really feel that, and you know, if we could control Shelburne Road. I think that our, our vision should be, you know, and this is just part of the dignity of respecting people's. Lives is um, ensuring that all of our roads um, have room for e-bikes, winter and summer. And not force them onto um, the bike paths that are out of the way.
It's interesting, in the Wall Street Journal, um, there was an article about e-bikes, I should have wrote it in, but about e-bikes and how, I think it's, I forget, Boulder. One of the, one of the cities in, in um, Colorado. Uh, are making some changes to their roads because of so many e-bikes and, you know, the sort of cars, but they're not, you know, a little bit different than a regular bike, but. So, and Swift Street is a prime example.
I'm sure there's others, yeah. Yeah, there's no shoulder.
Um, Paul, I think one of the things that I really loved about your dystopian vision was. The ways that we can think about. Like how things transform, and I think that's kind of what Monica was just getting at too, like how, how do we see what we have now? Maybe being different in the future as things change and, like, I thought about it a lot when we were doing like the um, the PUDs. Like the idea of like really clustering and having like sections of the land set aside. That might not be agriculture now, but maybe would be agriculture in the future or um, you know, could be set aside for some other needed use that maybe we're not anticipating now and. You know, I, I think it's almost something that could happen with our one zoning, our one zoning could wind up being like a few families living in one of those big giant houses with. An acre farm out back, like, you know, you think of like the victory garden situation where, you know, all our, all of our. Lawns, like the people who have lawns like might change into something more useful, like chickens and, and things. So it'll be interesting to see kind of how. You know, but I think keeping that dystopian vision in mind is important because, you know, I think. You know, things will change over time and if we make adaptable spaces or have more clustering or, you know, we can kind of. Leave more space for the future.
Yeah, it's not like the world is gonna come to an end. I mean, people will adapt the, the growing season here will be a lot longer. Um, you know, it'll be more possible. I mean, you can see that, I mean, I've been able to see that in my lifetime and when I first came to Vermont. It was unthinkable that anybody would have a cherry tree or plum tree or peach tree or anything like that. It was just too cold for that stuff to grow and now you see that it's common vineyards. I mean, there were no vineyards. I mean, that was just out, out of the question, you know, so. Things will, will evolve, you know. I went out on Lake Champlain um. With an archaeologist one time, looking at. The lake as it was twelve thousand five hundred years ago. Um, when it was at that level that, it's about twenty feet higher, I think, than it is now. When it was salt and when there was, you know, um, whales and. People in great longboats um, hunted along the shoreline, hunted whales along the shoreline. That was, that was life here then, you know.
Wow.
Yeah, so, and you know, that's, that's within an ice age, you know, so.
Crazy.
Yeah, one, one thing I, I did mention in my vision, and I, I was thinking about this because Monica's brought it up a number of times, talking about um. Demographics and, you know, what the, what the predictions are. Um, and I, you know, thinking, you know, we, we've. I, I think that we are gonna see more climate refugees. Um, you know, and how, you know, the demographics may say, okay, we're gonna get X amount of people. But if suddenly X plus twenty shows up or starts to show up, you know, because again, we, we. But if suddenly X plus twenty shows up or starts to show up, you know, because again, we we don't know. Um, you know, wh- where how are we going to handle that? And where are we going to handle that? Um, you know, this is a very desirable place to live uh, because it's a nice place. Um, but that could change because it's a desirable place to live because it's one of the only places you can live. You know, that's, that's a change in paradigm. Um, again, that could be fifty years down the road, but that's.
Hmm, I think it's gonna be sooner. I mean, so many, I see so many, uh, people, um, coming from California uh, as an example, and we're getting more people from, you know, Texas, parts of Texas and so on. Maybe political, but I think.
I was going to say, there are going to be people wanting to get out of the state that they're in.
Well, I, we have a whole portion of the country that's gonna run out of water, you know, and there are a lot of people that live out there.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I think we also have to keep in mind, I mean, we all want affordable housing, we want more housing and so on. But we also have to keep in mind, we can't do it all. We, you know, we have to realize that we'd like to we'd like to be able to accommodate five thousand more people, but is that realistic? You know, and and that's where Chittany County Regional Planning Commission needs to come in and, um, you know, be sort of that continued part of the conversation. Not say, okay, South Burlington, it's all, it's all in your court. It has to be Charlotte up the game, Jericho and so on. So I mean, that's, that's that's what discussion we have to make sure and and realize that we have to do our part, but we also have to be realistic.
No, we're growing by about five thousand people every two years. If you wanna look at the twenty year thing. I I I thought before coming to, I'd like to crunch the numbers and see what would happen if we grew ten percent like every decade, you know, for the next fifty years.
Right.
You know, cuz we're, we're pretty much right now at ten percent.
Yeah, if that's the case, ten percent doubles in every seven, seven point two years. That's right, yeah.
One thing that I wrote down and didn't say, and I think, I think it's probably important, at least for the comp plan to acknowledge is is jobs and like all different types of jobs, like, you know, I think it's easy to say, oh, we don't wanna have any industrial cuz it's big and sprawly and not exciting, but I mean, that's those are jobs and, you know, possibly creating things that we need or use for our lives. And so I get, I think that that's something to think about, like, you know, I think it's one thing to say we wanna keep everything the way it is, or, you know, just have more people, but I think we wanna make sure we also have places for them to work as well.
I think that's a great asset we have is that property on the east side of the city where the technology parks are, you know, that's that's amazing and huge out there, you know.
Yeah, a lot of room still.
Yep.
Other discussion on here, or do we wanna move on to comp plan? Okay, let's move into the comp plan. So this is, um, maybe even a little bit of an a uh, extension of what we were just talking about, but.
We're gonna skip the goals.
Um, no, we can, we can talk about the goals.
And we can skip, I mean, I I I wasn't sure if we were doing that. I mean, we, I'm good with just skipping whatever.
And going right to the outreach plan.
Um, wasn't that in order, wasn't it?
I was thinking number six we were gonna do now.
Okay.
If people had ideas more, I mean, I know some people have shared some specifics for the comp plan already, but if anybody else had any.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so do number six, so.
Great, sorry.
Ideas for the comp plan and and city goals. You know, and I know some of which we just talked about, but anything else.
It seems overwhelming. It's so hard to answer that in one meeting. And we already had a meeting very similar to this one when, when you were, I mean, I I feel like we're just gonna continue.
And and that's an okay thing to say, you know, we're gonna have a discussion with the city council coming up, um, you know, a commissioner brought this up and, you know, so it seemed like it was a reasonable thing to put on here. Paul?
Um, just one thing I I'd like to pop in there on on how we think about the this, the overall city goals. I think, you know, to the extent, one of the best things that happened in the twenty sixteen plan was to put the major vision goals into one page. And I would challenge us to say, how do we be uh, more punchy and even briefer? Because these are the things that, uh, the public, the council um, committee members can latch on to as to what are the key things that we're working on. So, uh, for example, when the council did their, uh, visioning this year for for the work plan, it was organized around four major goals of the plan, uh, affordable and community strong, um, uh, clean and green. Uh, um, walkable and walkable. That helps orient all the city's work. And, you know, then we can be reporting out on this, those major subjects. So I think of sort of in a similar way, the best part of the regional plan at the Chitting County Regional Planning Commission is they have, one of their goals is, um, eighty-five percent of new development occurs in fifteen percent of the land area. And that speaks to huge number of different issues. It's transportation, it's, uh, uh, equity to, in terms of people being able to walk to the services, it's environmental, it's natural resources, it's transit supportive. It's a whole bunch of things said in eleven words or whatever number of words that is. So.
Can you say that again?
Eighty-five percent of the development occurs in, it should occur in fifteen percent of the land area. And then there's a map that it that accompanies.
And that came from Burlington's?
No, that's the, that's the regional.
Oh, CCRP, okay, thank you, I was gonna say.
So, you know, that's just, that's an example. I'm not necessarily saying that we copy that exact thing, but I I've appreciated that that says almost everything that one needs to know about what the Regional Planning Commission is trying to achieve for Chitting County in one sentence. So, you know, how do we, and and it's, you know, that's a, that's a clear vision. That's not, you know, that's not something that is just pulled out of a textbook and says, you know, every, you could drop that into every county in the US. That's a, it's a.
Was that their goal for Chittington County, did you say?
Yeah, that's the current Chitting County Regional Plan. I mean, that's one of the goals. They have about ten major goals, but that's the that's one of them. And I think that that's.
Really, that that actually really surprises me because I'm trying to do the math on this. I'm very surprised that, um, their vision of Chittington County is that it would have so much rural in it then.
Yeah, there's a map that goes along with it. It's actually interesting.
With this.
That goal that Paul's talking about, the fifteen, so and it's, it's at least loosely based on all the individual towns' comp plans. So like areas where we've designated for growth or development, like along the corridors and city center like shows up as like part of that fifteen percent where they're, um, there's some actually like really rural areas in Chitting County that you wouldn't necessarily think about, um, at first glance, but.
Is that what our percentage is, Paul? That's your goal, but do you know what the?
So they have been tracking it annually and it's pretty much been right on to the, to the extent that they are, I think, looking at for the next plan, pushing that number higher.
Pushing which one, ninety-five percent?
Uh, I'd either lowering the land area or increasing the, um, the proportion, I can't remember.
If you do the quick math, if you you look at Burlington, South Burlington, Winuski, Essex, Shelburne, you know, not, not Jericho, Under Hill, Richmond, that area, but, you know, the population probably, that that probably does make sense cuz there's a lot of rural land out in, you know, Jericho and Richmond and.
Where would I find that map? Can you send the link to us?
It should be on the CCRP's website, I think.
I think Paul's pulling it up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it around, but I think.
But I I think the point is that it's a pretty clear goal.
Yeah.
No. Anything else on that, or do you wanna move into the outreach plan?
So twenty, uh, I can just report on this quickly. Uh, the eighty-seven percent of development since from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty have been in the areas uh, planned for growth. Eighty percent of development in growth areas. Yeah, so I was off by five percent in my estimate there, but they've hit eighty-seven.
Since when?
Since twenty sixteen. So that's when this was adopted. And by they, it's really all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is, um, not a goal for this, but I guess I'm going back to this notion of big decide, you know, big decisions or talking points, um, that we could go into the the city council meeting with. I just, I don't know of another town, definitely in, um, Chitting County that has the situation we have, which is that we have, like, the portion of Route Seven from the beginning of Shelburne, beginning of South Burlington to the end of South Burlington turns into this mega five-lane road that encourages speed and it, it empties onto a highway, which is one eighty-nine, which, you know, if if the Regional Planning Commission decided to add that exit, whatever, the one Dorset and Kennedy, we would have been taking one eighty-nine down a bit in size, but it's a big highway. And it goes to eighty-nine. Um, and that is just uh, you know, when you get into the Shelburne part of that road, it's, it's, I mean, I guess it's, it has broadened. But as soon as you cross over into Burlington, it's like there's houses right there with mature trees and sidewalks. And it's, it's a very different Shelburne Road right when you get there. Um, and I just, a- and we are encouraging, different from when this last comp plan was done, we are really trying with these TDRs moving, we're really trying to encourage more people living there too. And I don't know where else in Vermont um, if there are examples of anyone who's doing that well, and I hope that, and I know that we can't control the road. We can't say we want a median with trees down the middle of this road, or we want to take one of the lanes away and turn it completely into a safe bike ped lane. But are there things that our comp plan will be able to do to help us specifically find a way to let that major artery also be a place where people can live in dignity. And I think Williston Road is not, doesn't have the width. Um, we know that there's, there will be changes there, but that's it 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 is a pass-through street. Again, it doesn't have the width, so it's, but it is another major thorough there, but, um, you know, what can our comp plan do to help tell whoever is responsible for seven what we want their help with, because we can't do it, right? The state, whoever is in control of that money. So are there specific goals our comp plan can come up with that can raise flags with the state to, to help? And I don't know, yeah, I would do that.
I think Paul, you would.
You know, I'd be happy to participate in this discussion.
Yeah.
I, I mean, for me, I mean, I live right there, you know.
But you live on the other side of shots. You're, you're on the other side.
Yeah.
You're on the twenty-five mile per hour side.
Um, you know, forty mile an hour side, you know. Um, you know, Shelburne Road is the only artery really into the city of of Burlington. Yeah, I mean, you could maybe count uh, Pine Street, but you have to go on Shelburne Road to get to Pine Street anyway, you know, so, um, and I mean, for me, what I've always seen there is the problem is nobody ever built the Champlain Parkway. Nobody ever took all that traffic and moved it downtown without going through all these neighborhoods, you know. Um, and now, you know, Farrell Street's become a cut through and, um, the busiest intersection in the state is that intersection on Shelburne Road right there at the end of Swift Street.
Um, yes.
And it's way, way, way past anybody in terms of accidents and fatalities and everything else.
Is that true? Is that right? The Swift and Shelburne? Yeah, it's insane. It's not welcoming it.
Number two is Williston Road and Dorset Street, you know. So, um, uh, yeah, I mean, we've got a serious problem there.
Yeah.
You know, and you know, it's been thirty years or forty years now to build basically a inner loop in the city that just has never happened. It has never taken that traffic out of that residential neighborhood that really Shelburne Street, you know, should be, you know, so. Uh, I guess, you know, they think that building, uh, you know, a roundabout is gonna solve the problem there, but the problem is just too many tra- too much traffic and nowhere for it to go. Goes to, it goes to Maple Street.
But the the traffic on the south of that whole area, though, like I see from your, from where you're talking about, I agree, you you would, but but so, I mean, people are driving up seven cuz it's the only way.
Yeah.
All the way from Massachusetts and New York. I mean, this is how you do it, and the trucks have to do it too, and they have to get to Lowe's, and they have to get to, I mean, this is, it's but but for the first time, not for, not for the first time, but we are making a greater effort to want to make that area also a a more, um, ha- have it have more homes in it. More so, I think, more effort than in when the last time the comp plan was developed. Right? I mean, that's, that, there's a, there's a higher, um, level of importance for that area as a as, you know, higher housing with what we just just did with the TDRs and everything else. So it's like a, we're putting two big beasts together and I just I I don't know how to address it here, but to me, it it seems like a goal should be to find a way to make that coexist better.
No, I mean, that's what I, that's what I was talking about when I, I I said I'd love us to become a regional leader in infill because we do have, you're right, we do have a somewhat unique situation with both Shelburne Road and also Wilson Road. I mean, there's a lot of land on the north side that's just poorly or not used, um, that I I I really think that and I I almost agree with you, Monica, that, yeah, it's, it would, it should be a goal to get infill there because that's, we've talked about, we want it in the Transit Overlay District. It could be walkable, and yes, it could change the nature of the road. You know, I mean, that that may take some time, but it could change. If suddenly there's, you know, five thousand people living along Shelburne Road, that's probably gonna change the nature of that road. Um, you know, so, yeah, I I really believe that we have an opportunity to do some good there. It's gonna take some creative thinking and some, you know, some private landowners to really step up. Um, but yeah, I, that's, to me, that's, that's really where the rubber meets the road in terms of getting more housing.
Part of what I was to explain or trying to say with regard to having people know they're in South Burlington was the fact that as soon as they cross, whether it's from Williston or whether it's from Shelburne, is that they know they're in a town. And I mean, my road, fifty miles an hour, and uh, then it goes down to forty, but forty sixty and fifty sixty-five.
Seventy to fifty.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, we're, we're not controlling our own destiny because of it being a state road. But I think between all those roads, all those things that are coming through South Burlington, we should somehow create where there's more trees or some design and saying, when you cross that, you know, into that line, you're in South Burlington, it's a residential town, and, you know, you don't slow down at forty-five miles an hour as soon as you get to Kennedy Drive. So I think it's a big discussion that obviously the council maybe should have with the city with the Chittany County Regional Planning Commission or senators or whomever, so.
Do you, um, and you can, you can respond to this too, Paul, but, um, you know, we talked about doing some topic area discussion kind of facilitated discussion on key topics. And then, you know, I know this is part of our next agenda item, but we said one per committee and then some additional topics that were identified that are kind of maybe outside the committee structure. I wonder if this is one of the topics we might wanna consider doing, like, like pulling in some resources on, like Monica, you said, like, what can we do? Like, I don't know that we haven't answered tonight on what we can do, but we've definitely identified this is something that we're all very interested in.
Yeah, and it may not be, like, the road, the road needs to be there, so maybe it like what this other community is doing, and I would like, if we had a group of architects, if we could put some money towards, um, a brainstorming session for architects to to, here's the challenge. You know, here's where you can, here's where you can have housing. So what could we do from a design perspective that would, you know, have sound mitigation, that would create the, like, what, if there were no regulations, what would you do to make that a place that you'd wanna live for the rest of your life? I thi- I would love to see that, because the road has to, there's, I mean, but, you know, we we have to coexist.
Yeah, part of form-based code that often gets ignored is streetscapes. And, um, the idea with streetscapes is to build buildings that will slow the traffic down, you know, to really put a pinch on the road. So you see that with, uh, the new building that, uh, I keep forgetting, what do they call it? The building by Mc. You know, to really put a pinch on the road, so you see that with uh the new building that I keep forgetting, what do they call it, the building by McDonald's?
But Joe Larkin's building.
Yeah.
Uh, Larkin Terrace.
Yeah, Larkin Terrace, so I mean, they have built that unusually close to. A really busy highway, you know, where there's just basically a short walk area in front of the. Bank and stuff like that, and then there's cars. Um, and the bank across the street has done the same thing in New England. Federal Credit Union, and that's the idea is to put a pinch on a road like that so that people aren't driving fast because there. Is commerce there and there are people there, so that's uh, in that, that's the idea of the streetscapes is that.
And if I can just add to that same, same conversation, changing roads themselves is a long term proposition. But that doesn't mean it's not a worthwhile proposition, it's a long. But you, you know, as we think about, there's a project to redo the south side of Williston Road, right now. It's a very uncomfortable pedestrian experience because there's a. Two or three foot green belt, if that, um, and then a five foot wide sidewalk, and it's just not a very pleasant experience for somebody to be on. Even if the building were there. Uh, so. Part of this discussion can also be, and this, this was also part of form based code. Uh, thinking about our streets as a community asset. And how do we, how do we match them for the needs of the twenty first century? Because in the late twentieth century. The objective, you know, we look, I'm sure a few people have been around in South Burlington long enough to know that Willis, when Williston Road was a two lane road. The reason that there's a two foot green belt on the sidewalk is that the policy decision was made to say, we've got to widen this road, we've got X total number of feet. The the cars become the priority, so.
As that's in America.
Right, and how do we, how do we? Reconsider some of those things, street by street, and which streets do we start?
And Williston Road from the Burlington line, uh, including Staples Plaza and. Everything down to Heinzburg Road is all porn based code, porn based codes on both sides of the road.
It's great.
So I mean, anything we want to do there, we can do. And I don't know if people are going to miss entries or not, but. Not a lot of places there that can be infill.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, to me, that's, that's just a project waiting to happen.
Yeah, I mean, there's just so much old stuff there.
Yeah.
And a beautiful park right behind it that is being completely underutilized and it still drives me crazy that there's no crosswalks right at that park. On White Street, you have to.
Yes.
So.
So, uh, one last thing is when we're, when we're before the uh, the city council. What's the? You know, what sort of the agenda are we all? Speaking, do you summarize sort of what our collective thoughts were, which a lot of commonality? Uh, I don't, I don't know what, what the game plan is there in front of them.
So, uh, the, so the, the objective, I'll start with that and then we'll come back to the game plan, the objective is to. Uh, have a. Identified, if not the final wording, then at least sort of general concurrence on. The, wh- wh- what does the vision of the next plan look like? What are, what are the major? Um, that one pager, what does that look like? Um, my, our staff's intent was to take. What we've heard from you, take what we have heard um from the community over the last several years and. Put sort of a, 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 a first cut at it that. You collectively as the planning commission and council can react to and say, it's on the right track, it's not on the right track, it goes too far, it hasn't gone far enough. Um, I think we've got a pretty good lead on where those. The, that is, um. But that's, that's the game plan of what we wanted to bring forward.
What I hear, it sounds like we're really on, on the same page, which is still surprising, but. You know, with some little tweaks, but I think we generally have the. Same interests, but but I'm just putting my own.
Well, and I think, and I think the second half of it is, uh, where you started Ted of the. Twenty sixteen plan involved a lot of community outreach to get to that point. And that I think in, in my view, a, a lot of it is sort of turning the dials up on what was identified in twenty sixteen plan. Um, so there it talks about clean and green, here maybe it more, uh, it more directly speaks to climate change. Same subject area, greater emphasis. Um, and I think that that's been a, a part of our read is that there was a lot of good work that went in there, now what's the next? Step, what are the next five steps to take it even further? And did we miss some things, whether we're talking about dignity or equity? Or other subject areas, did we miss something entirely that? Um, you know, land use plan, the comprehensive plans are rooted historically in land use and. Um, we are collectively moving towards better understanding the needs of people, which is. They are users of land use, but it's not just land use, it's, we're, we're not just the sum of roads and buildings, we are. A thriving place for human beings, so that would be the other area that I think I've been witnessing and identifying of, how do we make this? A little bit more about the people. And uh, in addition to being about the land and the transportation.
Yep, yeah, and I would just say, I totally agree with that and I, I very much agree with what you said Ted too, but I also will just point out. Again, that um, we're not a very diverse group. So I'm not surprised that we are all kind of agreeing and it was the point that I made to the city council and if they do decide to add, if the city decides to add two seats, I hope that we get. Some people that don't agree, that we can have some more conversation because I think it's, that we need more of that to make this the best plan. So I'll just say again.
With no conflicts of interest or conflicts of.
Everyone has a conflict of interest, if we're talking about R one and should it be, and I remember us live in R one, I mean, I think there, there's, that's the nature of it, if you live in South Burlington, you, you know.
Conflict of interest usually means definition is monetary conflict of interest, I don't mean.
I, I don't know every, well.
Let's say, as an example, if someone's a real estate agent. You know, I have, I do have questions sometimes when they've come before us, you know, are they talking?
Well, I, so anyway, I mean, it's, 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 that's a matter of, that the matter's out of our hands, the matter is with, if the city council agrees to add and tries to add and then if the voters agree, but, but I. I, my point is, yeah, I think we're going to all pretty much agree.
Yeah, sorry about that.
We should get some mega people to come in and talk to us about climate change.
No, thanks, but there is different, there's, I wish that there were, you know. So hopefully we'll get that, when the public hearings, we'll get.
I think, I think as we do this, even if we all agree, I think we should each always like take a step back and say. Is this something I agree with because it's good for just me or is this someone that I, something that I, I see as being good for the community and all people in our community and I really appreciate your. Discussion of the dignity. And how that fits in, so, not just about our individual selves and our individual situations.
Well, and this will lead into your next item in the, on the, on the agenda, but. I think it was, I, I think we talked about this at your last meeting and if not, then um, it's been in my head that. As we've been looking at our um, housing permitting data, sometime in the next couple of years, we will have crossed the threshold where. The majority of households in South Burlington are not single family homes. More than fifty percent will be duplexes or multifamily housing and the bulk of that would be multifamily housing. Um, and that's a massive shift from twenty years ago, forty years ago. And so what does that mean? How do we do public outreach in a way that reaches out to that? Uh, a- as one example of a population that um, isn't always as. Um, they don't. It's underrepresented in public input.
So Paul, can um, uh, can I ask you a question? Because I know um. I would love to understand in that kind of statistic. What the turnover rate is. Um, by household type maybe, and if we see that. Some household types have a higher turnover than others, I would love for us to understand why and see what we can do to encourage. You know, to make every, you know, the goal should be that every residence, every unit. Is a, a dignified and desirable place to be, so much so that one does not want to move unless they need more space or they need to have less space or they're moving to another job in another. Part of the country, but if we see that we have um, certain. How, whatever, I don't know how to, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I think that that's a good question and also I would connect it to. Stages of life also, right? So um, some people want to be in a certain type of housing when they're twenty two and a different type when they're thirty two and a different type when they're sixty two. But. Within the abilities of that housing of the, let's say that the number of bedrooms and that kind of thing, does it offer the opportunity?
And that may help us in figuring out how we can. Create the housing that. Um, yeah.
Okay, so are we moving into the outreach plan discussion? Now, Monica, you and Paul had brought up some ideas about outreach and then. We had also had kind of a draft, kind of bigger, long term schedule of. Outreach, which, which isn't only like. Direct, um. Like it, it includes like group meetings and and envisioning sessions and newsletter and so Paul had included that in the. The packet as well, just kind of as the bigger. Reminder of what we had talked about at that, that point.
So I don't know, Paul, if you want to.
Monica and I were both on the um, you know, we were airport rezoning passports. And that I, you know, that became a lot more than just rezoning, I mean, rezoning was sort of, yeah, no, we're not, we're not gonna rezone. And then there was just a whole lot of discussion and a lot of people at public meetings and much more was talked about than. And rezoning and the approach that was taken, I thought was excellent, which was to. Have the public hearings first. And then develop uh, the policy based upon the public hearing. And um, and have the staff assistants to do that. Um, we had uh. Randy, what's her name, Paul?
Brandy Saxton.
Saxton, yeah, it was our staff person there. And she was great about doing that, you know, I mean, and would rewrite for us and basically did her writing for us, which was really good. Um, and it was really good to hear from. People, I mean, we really heard from people and we really listened to people and we made the decisions that we made based upon what we heard. So that was, um, I thought, an inspiring experience. And something that we could bring to the comprehensive plan as an approach to developing the comprehensive plan. Um, and then Monica called, called me a couple, well, maybe a month ago or so now. And I'll, just with the idea that we. Start recognizing the neighborhoods in the city, you know, we, we brought this here before and talked about it. And recognizing what I think of as opinion leaders in the neighborhoods and um. And bringing people in, bringing people in. Um, to talk to us about their neighborhoods and. Um, and helping them to organize their neighborhoods. I want to, at this point, invite everyone to our neighborhood picnic, which will be on the seventeenth of. September, Saturday night, the seventeenth of September, we always have a great annual neighborhood picnic in our, in our neighborhood. Lots and lots of people show up, there's lots of young families in uh, in our neighborhood now, um, lots of little kids, you know. And it's just a great neighborhood and we all get together, you know, there's old people, I mean, I have my like old people crowd, you know. Of people who've been there for a long, long time and um. And then the, the new, the new people that come in with the kids that are, you know, two or three or four or five years old, you know. It's great, I mean, it's a great mix and, and, and a great neighborhood, I have to say. So um, that's what I'd like to see, I'd like to see that twenty sixteen plan that the Chamberlain Neighborhood wrote. And we're a few months late for the twenty sixteen planet. We really have to bring that in, I mean, they're really counting on us to bring that in. Um, as we develop the comprehensive plan. And I would like to see other neighborhoods, you know, get involved, I mean, our neighborhood has some issues, we've got. Race traffic issues, you know, we've got all these little kids and, you know, lots of speed merchants who are. Rice High School students and uh, you know, a full line of traffic every morning at eight o'clock um. On Proctor Avenue, people taking their kids to school at Rice, you know. So there's only one way in and one way out of Rice and that's through our neighborhood, you know, so. I'd like to see us, you know, start talking to neighborhoods to see what some of the issues are. And some of the things that we could respond to, either in, you know. Large meetings like we have, public meetings like we have, which we have the technology now to, I think, really um. Really utilize um, public input. Um, and then Monica had other ideas too about things we could do like house parties and.
Well, I mean, y- yeah, so um, so base with that. Um, with that foundation. Paul had provided us with a very rough, you know, estimate of how many, forty, forty different neighborhoods and then, you know. By just drawing circles throughout South Burlington and that's a lot, but there are seven of us. Um, and so if you really think about it and we have how many years for the plan, if we took forty and divided it by seven. We'd each have actually just a few neighborhoods that we could each kind of be responsible for kind of getting to know. And if everybody, it's a lot of work, if everybody liked the idea and agreed, you know, Paul and I talk and I'd be, I. I did a lot of qualitative and quantitative research in my advertising and marketing days, I would be willing to help organize. Finding the, um, you even have it here, the champions for action, each neighborhood, everybody knows who their neighborhood. Kind of go to person is, and they might not be the person that has the answers, but they would be the person who would. Uh, be able to communicate with their neighborhood and say, hey. Planning Commission is giving us a chance to let them know what. Um, and so if each of us agreed, but we'd have to all agree to. Take, take on this, our, our set of neighborhoods and decide um, how we're going to connect. So the role that I would be happy to volunteer doing is figure out who the, who the contacts are. For some kind of neighborhood, I don't know how we, you know, we'll figure it out. And then ideally, if everybody took their group of, you know, n- seven neighborhoods. Um, it would be interesting if we had. A document that we could share with them that some kind of, like, this is what a comp plan is and this is why we're coming to you in the first place. And this is generally what it does. Um, so that they all have the same foundation and then ask the same kind of questions. So that we could all share with each other what, what are the similar answers and then what, what answers are different? And if we organize it, you know, if we structure it well enough, it's relatively easy to, to put the information together. Um, and we could each reach out to our neighborhoods maybe two to three times. Before a comp plan is done. And become, you know, they will then be in touch, as Paul and I have seen, and they'll say, hey, when can we? Share this idea or like I was at a, I was at a birthday party in the Mayfair neighborhood and. I just instantly figured out who the person would be because it was easy to, easy to know. And I already learned about one road they were concerned about becoming a cut through and, you know, there's um. If we were to divide and conquer, I think we could actually really get to know. Um, a lot about the neighborhoods. But it would take all of us agreeing and I'm willing to do some of this set work, uh, setup work if you guys want it. Um, but I only want to do it if everybody's, if everybody's in because.
And not, not just do it for the sake of doing it, but doing it as. A way of planning, you know, that.
Oh, yeah.
That's the approach that we would take to developing the uh, the comprehensive plan.
Um, Duncan?
Yeah, quick question and I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm going down a rattle here, um. How? I, I, I guess what I, I see, I see a couple of things, I see, you know. Getting complaints about individual things in the neighborhood, that's not really the comp plan. But what, what do we preface showing these people? Do we show them the visions and the goals from the two thousand sixteen comp plan and say, you know. What do you think of these? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to fr- how do we frame? Because if there's a road that's a cut through.
Right.
That's not really the comp plan per se.
Right, I mean.
So how do you?
That's why this, this initial document that we start with is important and I don't know how, who creates it and, you know, Paul certainly. Can't because, but it's something that, that's why we ask the que- we give them. We guide the conversa- the initial conversation with this in- initial document, we're all asking everybody the same questions and I don't know. And I don't know what the questions are, but they're, the the goal is to be comp plan focused. And of course, they're going to say, oh, and by the way, this really bothers me. And it's like, they want to be heard. And and we have an opportunity to hear it, and that's kind of taking the information in. But but the que- those, you're right, how, what questions, how can we guide? That conversation to help the conversations with them be that bigger picture, and what do we want to get out of it?
You said our goal with the joint meeting with the city council is to come out with the visions. Pretty clear clarified? I mean, I I I guess where where I'm going is, do we have a document we could take from that meeting and then distribute it and? Give it to the folks in the neighborhood and say, what do you think of this? That was, right, that that was the orientation that we were thinking about is it gives people something to respond to and to. Start with because South Burlington is is, you know, it's 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 an amazing community. It's it's a very. Multifaceted community, and so how do you orient people to a similar uh focus of conversation? Regardless of how they might choose to answer it, and I think that was sort of our idea was to give a framework and say. At a citywide level, is this, um, you know, tell us what you think about this. What does this mean in your neighborhood level? Um, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and tha- that is the trickiest part, and it might take a professional survey creator, like it might, somebody who knows. I I've participated in so many and I can organize the numbers, but getting the language down to and and training us. Before we go to the public, so that we all understand what our role is in listening and how to help guide to keep. On document, so if 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 that, I mean, so that's one idea.
Don't forget who these people are too. They are the people that we represent. And they're the people who built this building, and they're the people who pay everybody salaries. I mean, that's who these people are. AKA citizens, you know.
Yeah, um, Paul.
Um, two thoughts. One, um. That's it's uh it's it's an exciting proposition to be orienting work towards the neighborhoods. And I think, you know, if we were to sort of do a little bit of a forensic analysis of planning in South Burlington's history, it has been very. Uh uh oriented towards the areas about. Uh undeveloped areas, whether whether we're looking to develop them or conserve them, that has been the focus of a lot of attention. Um, and probably appropriately so, but uh we've begun to have some internal conversations at the budgeting level at at other. Uh, in in other subject areas of how do we reinvest in neighborhoods? What does that look like? Um, that's not been a major subject of South Burlington, so this is sort of aligned to that. Um, my challenge back to you as you think about this is. To consider this subject area not just as a twenty twenty four comprehensive plan. But what does this look like over the life of a comprehensive plan? Um, to be um following up on these subject areas to be. Cause I, i- if you if you get lots of inputs from these different neighborhoods at the comprehensive plan level, the natural next step then will be to say. And we should pay attention to. The orchards area uh and and give it some, it's due attention, not just as one neighborhood of forty in the city, but of one of one. And I think, you know, that's some of the success of the Chamberlain um project a few years ago. Not that there has been all the implementation of it, but that there was special attention paid and said, what are your issues? Um, and that's not likely to be able to be done in the timeframe of a comprehensive plan. But a comprehensive plan can lay the foundations to say, and this is how we want to. Uh, advance these kinds of, whether it's by subject area or by physical geography. Over the next eight years, and that's what planning looks like in our community. So that's my challenge back to you to think about it as where does that go then?
Right, yeah, and something that Paul and I had already said to on one call with some of the Chamberlain folks is um. That as planning commissioners, our job is to learn from each, but then we need to sometimes make tough decisions. For the greater good, you know, we'll we'll listen to individual neighborhoods, but in the end, we might then have to recommend a policy. Based on. You know, things we've seen here, and it isn't going to necessarily be exactly what. The neighborhood has asked or has brought to us, and that's just part of what the the process is. So I think that we, they seem to understand that, that we're here to listen to them, and then we have to go back and really think citywide. When we develop the plan, and they seemed to respect that. I mean, they didn't, yeah.
Yeah, people are more aware than we think they are, really.
A couple of things, um, I think that's great that you did all that you did in the Chamberlain. Um, neighborhood, I mean, that that neighborhood has obviously had issues for some time, so they're very engaged. My concern is that other neighborhoods aren't quite so engaged, and the reality is that fifty percent. Of the South Burlington people even take the time to vote. Um, so, you know, it's gonna be difficult to try to engage uh a lot of people. Um, and I hope we have a, you know, a common questionnaire that's the same questions that all the neighborhoods are being asked. You know, what are your interests? What is your, what are the, you know, needs in your neighborhood? What do you like about South Burlington? What don't you like about, you know, those kinds of. Uh, questions, um, it may be get into depth, maybe we need a professional person to do that. Uh, but, you know, other paper, maybe that questionnaire should be, and we just don't want to have a questionnaire that, you know, uh, someone is stuffing the ballot box, so to speak. Um, so, y- you know, I am concerned that it is gonna be really tough to get uh as much. Participation as you all experienced in Chamberlain.
Yeah, I I I think that um, I I agree with you, and and it's also sometimes, you know, the world is run by those who show up. So um, if if, the, I mean, that's just the nature of of it, right? But it's it's the trying, and it's the few people that do, and I think that we will learn a lot.
Yeah.
Whether it's the two-way win is that people will have an opportunity to speak and be listened to. But we will hopefully each walk away with. A different perspective than we may have had, and I think, and if we. I think you can't let go of that once you hear it, you know, you, uh, so it will come up again. As we look at every other plan, we will be hearing the voices. Um. And, yeah, but but you're right, some neighborhoods, and but that's okay, there's techno- there's tech, there's easy ways now. Especially post-COVID, there's easy ways to offer it, and if, I mean, when we did the visioning or the. All those mapping sessions I did, my god, I vol- we pushed the, we advertised, and sometimes there were three people, and sometimes there were the same three people, and that's okay. We tried, so, so that's all we can do.
I guess I have, um, so I'm just kind of looking at our. The things we already said we were gonna do as the public outreach. And also thinking about the scale of what you're talking about, and I'm I'm not at all pushing back, cause I would, I mean, I'm happy to go talk to neighborhoods. If that makes sense. Um. But there's a couple of things on here that may or may not be starting to get at what you're talking about, like the online poll. And and maybe that's not the right tool that you're talking about, but like if we're having people fill out a questionnaire. You know, maybe that is a format that makes sense. Um, um, and then. Facilitated neighborhood meetings, like we did talk about doing these. But these, I think we were talking about doing more of like um. The quadrants, so it might be like multiple, multiple neighborhoods that are near each other. Um, you know, like I'm, I identify as like Valley Ridge, which is like a tiny little, like forty, how, you know, forty unit. Um. But I really were part of the greater Chamberlain neighborhood with a couple of those other neighborhoods that may or may not have been involved in the Chamberlain planning process, so. Um. I guess like thinking about the scale and like what makes sense, like, you know, for some, a place like Chamberlain, there's so much pressure, and there's the airport and the zoning change. And, you know, so I think you got a lot of participation, but I guess maybe I'm thinking about what Ted's thinking about, like maybe. Maybe some kind of lumping, so we're not at forty, but we're. And we're doing like kind of a bigger public outreach and like advertising on front page for porch forum, and like I guess I'm just wondering like, like what. Um, what makes sense with our resources and with.
It could even be front porch forum groups, and I don't know how small the front porch forum groups are.
We have nine currently in South Burlington.
You know, I mean, and so it could be even per, if we each take one of the front porch forum groups. And then within that, I don't know, you know, we don't have access to if it's not our neighborhood, and and personally, I don't think any of us should take our own neighborhoods. That's my own two cents, because the goal here is for us to learn from others, so I don't think any of us should take our own neighborhoods, but if we have, you know. But if we even just took the nine. And then, you know, different, everyone will go to their own level of what they're able and willing to do, but. You can reach within that and just say, I'm I'm Monica, I'm your designated planning commissioner for the comp plan, and I'm taking this. This group.
Good idea.
And here's what, you know, I'm, I am available and I'll do a Zoom with whoever is interested, and I can share this with you and. Take some of your information and, you know, so I I think it, we, there's easy ways to to streamline. And and I think the key is that, once we make the initial offering. There will be people, and sometimes there will be people coming at us with things, you know, that. Do not relate, and we have to be able to say, I'm hearing you, I'm going to take this down because you've said it. Frequently, and I know that this is of significance, and we should document that. But the comp plan is gonna relate to these other topics, so, you know, if we're all kind of. I I think we all know that, we've seen it in public meeting enough, in public comments enough, we think we got that, so. You know, but we might need somebody at the city level to talk to front porch forum, like maybe Helen would have to do the initial, whoever has access to the full. And I don't know if we're allowed to use one source like that, because that isn't reaching everyone, but but maybe. We do something like that.
We should do some marketing too, you know, I mean, we should be in, we should publicize this kind of stuff in the newspaper and. You know, in front porch forum. Let people know that we're doing it, doing this, and that we want them to participate.
And if you live in this neighborhood.
People could get excited about it and could actually take off, you know.
One other sort of connection piece that I've, I think I might have mentioned at one of the recent meetings was um. Uh, we have a pretty amazing resource in some of the other departments in the city. And the way in which they communicate with our citizens, so whether they help us to you to directly communicate with the citizens. Or we take the opportunity with one or more commissioners to talk with just those departments. So, for example, you know, I was just talking with a couple of the fire captains.
Yep.
They are in the community and a and are um interacting with residents on a pretty regular basis. On issues that are very important to them, that maybe have nothing to do with land use, you know, it's about. Uh, how they're provided the services as senior citizens, and the police department has, you know, a a. Um, lot of outreach through the Community Justice Center, through um, through all their different touches in the community. That is a very different world of who I'm at least regularly in touch with, and could be an interesting opportunity and window into. Those who don't sort of necessarily typically present themselves at a public meeting. Um, but who are equally are residents, and and so we can think about how to do that, one. Um, certainly, the the one way to do it, or at least a starting point for it, is to have conversations with those. Um. Fire, police, uh, library folks who who are talking with those community members every day and hearing what they have to say about our community.
Comprehensive plan is for everybody too.
Right.
Well, and within an initial message too, we can invite, you know, who's the, who's your go-to person in the neighborhood who can help? Spread the word, and people, like when I went to this party, people weren't saying, oh, that's me, people were all like, oh, that's Mary. They're like, yep, Mary's got, you gotta talk to Mary, so that we can ask exactly that, and people will, people will direct. And I think that with with the use of like front porch forum and these different mechanisms now, I think people are are more there than they have been in the past. So as long as it feels welcoming and productive and easy.
Newsletter is a big, um, it reaches almost half the households in the city at this point, which is a huge. Actually, more than half, that's that's the the largest single place that we have, other than the other paper, of course.
I would think that we would be able to look at a map and geographically lump some of the neighborhoods together. I mean, we do have some that are outliers, you know, Country Club Estates, um, you know, maybe Van Sicklin Road, but even that could be lumped with. Butler Farm, so we could certainly consolidate, but I I I really like the idea of going two neighborhoods, because Paul, you've mentioned this. Um, you know, there's buying it, people feel like they've been heard.
Yeah.
Even even if they don't get necessarily what they, exactly what they want. They're they're, they're much happier with the end product if they feel like they've been listened to. Um, you know, and the big question is, like Ted said, how do we engage some of these folks that are gonna be hard to get to?
Mm-hmm.
But I I love the idea. I think I think it's great.
Couldn't be surprised how much, how many people, just the seven of us here actually know, you know.
Yeah.
You start thinking about, um, Abby Crocker, you know, I mean, that's a whole neighborhood up there, you know.
You hear that, Abby?
No, but you know, I mean, it's like that everywhere, you know, people all around town.
It will, I think, yeah. The preparation is key, um, understanding what it is, how do we set the tone so that they understand? What the what the purpose is.
About your neighbor's dog.
Can't do anything about the neighbor's dog. Um.
I've worked with Monica a couple of times now too, and I have to re- really seriously recommend Monica on stuff like this. I mean, she is, she will blow the house up, you know, I mean, she really will.
I sense a subcommittee of one.
No, I'm not going alone. Yeah, so.
Like you said, Mike, I mean, it's the work you've done, and I under, you know, I have the same, I have a similar background, so I know what that kind of work is that you're talking about.
Thank you, Paul. So, I mean, so basically, if folks. And we have two members that aren't here today, so I mean, I'd really like to know that they're, that everybody's in on having the time to to do some outreach, but. Um, if you, if everyone agrees, whether it's this meeting or not, I would propose that a next step is um. If we like this front porch form, at least looking at the front porch forum map to see what those clumps are and make sure that everything's covered. And then, and some of those might be smaller, so if there's seven of us, then maybe somebody gets two of those, right? And then, um, if we start with that, and um, at the same time. Uh, it would be really wonderful if we were gonna do this to initiate contact when the weather's still warm, so that if people were interested in. We could do, people could do one outdoor gathering um at a park in a neighborhood. Maybe there's budget for some cookies or something, I don't know, and then the other could be a Zoom. Right? So, so maybe, but but the point is, if we want to do this, we start soon enough that while the weather's warm. We can each offer to host, and and a neighbor, you might not get any takers, I mean, or you might go to a park and be there by yourself, and that is fine too. But um, we want to do it while the weather's warm, so getting the questions down and this initial document. I'm happy to, I mean, I haven't created documents like that in a long time. So, um, and I know that staff is pretty flat out, so I don't know if there's ideas for.
Could couldn't we just give them, I mean, ideally, we're talking about the comp plan here, so it seems to me like we should give them. Either some version of the two thousand sixteen visions and goals or the updated version that hopefully we will have.
Uh, I think it needs to be very just relatable, like what it, cause you look sometimes at a page of words like that, and it's kind of. It's.
So this, something that might help um orient this, this summer, um, there's been some, there's been outreach being going on with the. With the Climate Action Plan, and some of that has been through an online poll, some of that has been meeting with folks uh in person. The the poll also has printed versions, and it it really tries to distill down to a handful of questions now. What's handy about a climate action plan is that it's a specific subject, but the questions try to be very relatable of. Um, how how big of a subject area is climate action, is climate in your life, you know, first question, and then. Uh, what's one action that you think the city should be taking to address this? And it it helped people, I think we got pretty good responses to it, because it was something that they could distill down to something. Uh, uh, concrete and meaningful ra- rather than sort of a ethereal topic of, you know. Wha- what are the grand subjects of the of the world, which is very hard for people without a lot of priming? To give an answer that they feel good about. Which is very hard for people without a lot of priming to give an answer that they feel good about. Well, and I think. Unless there's something very specific in their neighborhood, which I think is Ted's point of, you know, if I lived in a neighborhood where it was a thing that's been happening for years. I probably have a thought that I'd love to share about that thing.
So, and I think the important thing is the first meeting, this is our initial phase. It's really to let them know we're working on this, that they have someone to call and that they're going to hear from us again when we actually have more to share. We're going to gather, we're going to listen to them now and say, we're here and offer just some general, like what is the planning commission and why are we doing this?
And how important the complaint is.
How important the, and how important the comp plan is. And, and then, and just some very, very preliminary, like, I mean, I think this whole eighty-five in fifteen percent is fascinating. And I want, I mean, it like, this is what has, this is what's been happening. And it, our goal is to, we're, we're likely to continue in that trend. Does that, there, there can be some very big, like three big questions that, um.
Would pertain back to the visions and goals?
Well, yeah, because, yes, and but the, so the question is, what are those three? And that's getting to those is, is the tricky thing. But the, the initial reach out is to start the conversation. And then we will see with our community members, we'll probably each end up with like five, you know. Hopefully five interested, you know, people that are willing to share or show up to a meeting. Or, you know, hey, the, we're having a public hearing on the first round of this. Um, and it mentioned it'll address some of the issues that we heard in your neighborhood. Can you get the word out and let people know? So I think that, that's really what we're, that, what we're ultimately trying to do.
It's also dovetails really well with the, um, um, the charter change that the city wants to make to expand, uh. The city council and to have city council elected from districts, not citywide. So, um, I think that, you know, it'll be important for the. City council to understand what we're doing or finding out. I think that'll be really helpful to them.
So I'd be happy if, um, one or two of you wanted to meet with me and I can help to. Um, figure out what those resources are, like whether it's front porch form or others. I've got access to a lot of that stuff to help sort of frame that and help suss this out a little further. I'd be happy to do that, Monica or Monica and Paul, whoever. Happy to do that with you all. Um, I would also challenge, like, as we're thinking about this, is this is something that the climate action group's been working really hard on is. How do we reach, uh, the more difficult to reach populations? And, uh, in this context, it might be areas where there isn't necessarily a strong sense of neighborhood. Um, but where maybe a lot of people live in what can become a neighborhood. So I think of a place like Farrell Street or the whole Kennedy Drive Row where there's thousands of people who live there. I'm not sure that they necessarily yet have the neighborhood leader in a, in a place like that, maybe they do. But if there isn't, what's, how do we still reach them? So one thing that the climate action group is doing this summer is in three different areas. Uh, um, Champlain Housing Trust is hosting a sort of a neighborhood barbecue for the people who live in some of their buildings. And so they have been, they've coordinated with and are attending that in a way that is, you know, it's a very low pressure. It's just, you know, people are coming out for ice cream and, and burgers. And, and hey, let's have a conversation about this. So it's not, it's not trying to get poll people to somewhere where they haven't been, it's just meeting them where they're at. And so how do we, uh, foster that same thing in areas where there maybe isn't quite as much of a natural sense of neighborhood? That would be my challenge to all of us.
We can't capitalize on, um, the Thursday night gatherings at, uh, Veterans Memorial Park.
The climate group, we were able to do it for the climate action plan for the nights that didn't have massive thunderstorms. But yes, I think that, that's, that's another way to reach a lot of people who represent a cross section of our city. Um, that don't necessarily orient themselves to come into a public meeting or zooming into a public meeting.
I mean, but this is where I'd say, I, I agree, but. A comp plan, how do I say this? I think that what we, our goal should be to make sure as many people initially are aware that we're getting into this. And then, when it's time to have a public hearing, that's the public hearing. And anyone who has an opinion, that's the time to be there and to make sure that it's addressed that night. You know, like there is a process, this is not a, you know, the, the process will, um. The, the way that, I, I mean, I wasn't involved the last time you guys did the comp plan. I don't know if you had multiple public hearings per section or how you did it. But, you know, this isn't something like a campaign where people are voting on things. It's, it's not like that at all. It's really us in the, in the beginning, letting them know that it's coming and the understanding the topic of it. And that, I mean, if there are some big changes that the plan proposes, like infill, I mean, I think we should probably. Put that in there as something that, um, from the get go is like, how, how do you feel about that? What's any, whatever, I don't know how to, what.
It is a campaign, we're asking for their, not their vote, but their opinion on issues.
If they opt to give it, but we're going to have, that, that's what every, we could, we could do zero outreach and follow. The path of advertising public hearings like we always do on every other LDR that we propose.
We'll see the same people.
And we'll see the same people and, but, but that works. I mean, that's, that's the, that's the process.
We won't pay much attention to what we heard anyway.
So, it, so I guess what I'm saying is we don't, we should, I don't, personally, I don't see this as like running it like a campaign. Where we're going to go to every fire truck, you know, parade thing and be out there with our, it's cop plan time, it's cop. Because there's, it's, it's, um, ultimately. Someone will have to sit down and read a five hundred page document, alt, if they really want to, you know, get into it. We're, we're just looking to get big picture ideas from people, inform them of what's happening. And give them a, a person to call if they have questions. I mean, that's.
It almost sounds like you're saying that trying to network at Veterans Memorial Park. In those evenings when there's gobs of people getting their opinion, whether it's a booth, questionnaire. I mean, we're looking for as much input as possible.
I guess it, if, if at some point, if you're going to do all that work, you have to have more than three questions. I mean, that, that sounds like a later phase maybe. But, but not, not, not immediate, not for, well, may, I don't know.
Monica, I think you're talking about stuff up in the early part of the outreach, letting people know what's happening. And then, and then as we move through the process, I think that we're, we become more and more detailed. You know, we had talked about more like visioning sessions, so like, and then facilitated subject areas. So like, if we've identified people in the neighborhoods that are kind of champions, we would like specifically let them know. When these key subject area meetings are happening and maybe they could rally some neighbors that they know are interested in those areas. Maybe it's a way, it's just like another way of us maybe attracting people to participate in those conversations as we happen. And then, and then, you know, I, I would guess we'd still do like a facilitated neighborhood meeting where we're like. You know, you did, we, we did this initial one and now we're going to come back and say, okay, let's talk more in detail about what's going on in your neighborhood.
Here's the draft plan, here are segments of the draft plan that.
Yeah, and then, you know, we talked about listening sessions, like that could be another time when someone could kind of reengage also. Like, so there are these like different times through the process.
I'm just. I'm having a reality break here. Um, I, I think realistically, we will be lucky to connect with most of these people once. Um, so I guess what, what's, you know, my feeling is in the neighborhoods, there are certainly people who will show up. You know, for another meeting, but, but a lot of these people we're only going to get to once. So what's the biggest bang for the buck to get to them? And, and get the best, to get the most information that we're looking for out of them or what, what we think they really want to tell us.
I think that's what we need to discuss. I mean, is it simply making sure people understand the comp plan is being worked on? And it's the most important document that guides the cities. My, you know, what, like, whoa, you know, do we, do we ensure people understand what the comp plan is? And that it's coming and here's my number, right? I mean, if that isn't the most important thing we do right now, and if people choose to then call and say, hey, when, what we've heard from, what Paul and I have heard. From, yes, it's a very active group of residents, but it seems similar to me than, from what I've heard from other people in other related conversations. They're like, well, what, when can I let them know? When is that happening? When can I, that's what they want to know. But you know, when can I, um, share this about the comp plan? When can I let them know this? That's, those are the kind of questions I think that, um, that will come, it's, it's.
I guess to me, to, to answer your question Duncan, the, the, the place where you want to get the. If you only had one touch with, with, with some people, then to me, it's on the top four or five goals. Because those top four or five goals, however they are, are the foundation of the next decade's policies. That will be all sorts of different things. So, you know, if, if we were to say that our focus was, uh, in getting people through South Burlington. As fast as humanly possible, and that's where we were oriented, that is a very different, you know, set of a hundred different actions. Then we are interested in people moving, uh, you, you know, slowly to destinations in our community. Or, or whatever, whether we're talking about. But I think if you could get input on one time of input and a few minutes, it's really on. Can you package a statement to say, this is what South Burlington looks like in the elevator speech? Are we on the right track for that vision? Or, and what are we missing from that vision? And if somebody were, you know, if you get a whole bunch of people saying, you know, you have not addressed, uh, uh, dignity. And, and however they want to phrase it, but I think that will bubble up very quickly. If, you know, this, this all seems to be about nuts and bolts, but not about people. I think you will get that pretty quickly if based on those, that level of questions. So that's where I would focus the principal amount of the energy. Because with twenty thousand residents, you're going to get very small handful that will engage at all. And a really tiny handful that will read more than a couple of pages. Realistically, so, but how, but their input is still valuable on those couple of pages.
I, I guess my, my point in, in saying that was, I, I think we have to be really dialed in with what we go out to people with.
I agree. Well, and it sounds like by the time we get through this nine twenty-seven city council meeting. Our, our combined meeting, if that happens, then the art is, is our goal to have the goals kind of. Discussed.
Ready for, for community input, ready for community reaction, I guess.
Well, or re, I mean, well, first we want the city council to know what those goal, right? So it's kind of like after that meeting, we all say yes or no, these, these are the goal or, right? And then after that, we then try to establish some outreach with the outcome of that.
Yeah, but we can have a plan in place and like know who we're, who and how we're going to email, who's, who's gonna do what. Neighborhood areas, like we can come up with that plan, but I think you're right. I guess I kind of agree with what Duncan's saying, like, if, if we don't have that in place and we don't have something for someone to read and give a comment on. I think it might be, um, less productive than it could be. Then if we've already met with the city council, we already have kind of a revised out, at least outline. And then we can have that as like a main part of the conversation to go along with other neighborhood issues that come up. I think that could be a good.
I think that's great, yeah.
Just, um, to dispel any pessimism. One thing Monica and I worked together on was the, um, uh, the rebel alliance and the. Three times that the budget was voted on, the school budget was voted on. And the third time we really went to work on it. And, um, after losing twice, uh, the first thing we did, we put together a group. Uh, that was, was that a private, uh, Facebook group?
I don't know.
It's about a hundred and twenty-five people that was put together in about two weeks. They were all really dedicated to this, okay? And we won by about two thousand votes. So that's what to expect.
Something very different, very different, very different time, very.
Very different, but I'm sure we get much, this is much larger and much more of an opportunity to show our stuff.
Well, I love, I love the ideas, the new, new outreach items.
Yeah, and like I said, I am very willing to put the time in as long as everyone's comfortable with, you know, taking the ownership of there and trying, you know? And, and, and like, you know, it'd be great to hear from, uh, from, I actually meant to, um, reach out to them prior to this meeting to get their sense of that. Like, do they even have the time? Will they, will they take ownership of, of a group?
You talking about Andrew and Michael?
Yeah.
Who's that?
Andrew and Michael, just because they're not here, so. It's, you know, because they're also very busy, we're all, but you know, th- this is not, this does not become a second job, it's.
Great, okay.
Andrew was fascinated by the idea that he actually lived in a neighborhood.
Okay, um, are we ready to move on to minutes? Minutes of August eighth?
Page three, um, midway down. Uh, just Mr. Really said he hoped that Children County Regional Planning Commission, blah, blah, blah. But then it says, um, but it is suicidal to drive on the road meeting Van Sicklin. And it was, I think, biking on Van Sicklin Road.
Okay, so you drive fast on Van Sicklin Road, Ted.
They do.
Okay, any other minute items?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, on favor, hi?
I will abstain because I was not there.
Okay, passes four of us and Duncan abstained. Okay, other business, there was a battery energy storage project that we had information on. Anyone want to discuss? It's other business, it's one of the Vermont Public Utility Commission projects that, you know, we just kind of give everyone the information. In the case that, um, somebody notices something that we would want to follow up on. Sometimes we have followed up on these.
Um, I'll just speak to it super quickly and say this is, um, we were not aware of the project until it, um, came to us, uh, for this. But, uh, it's kind of a neat project where the purpose is to increase the, uh, capabilities of the energy grid. By having battery storage for when electricity is being generated, so it can be used another time. It is proposed to be located on, this is, um, Community Drive right here. Uh, this is the new traffic signal right at the top there and FedEx is just down below a little bit. Uh, so it's in behind, uh, right next to this, um, transformer. And behind this small, secure parking area, so it's really not going to be visible at all. Um, and it is outside of any identified natural resources.
And then just in, in future, it's also important to keep that away from residences. Where people are sleeping for hours and hours, which this is. It's like the, the, um, we're significant power grids and all of that, I think, can have some health implications. If you're by them for the majority of your day.
So along those lines, it seems like maybe it's in a good spot.
Right.
Cause it's right next to an existing transformer and.
Right.
Not near any housing.
Yeah, right.
Okay, any, anything, any other questions or? Okay, so no action?
Great.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Great, thanks, everyone.
Um, do you want to check if there was anything that anybody wanted to comment?
Actually, before we adjourn, did you need anything or want to talk to us about anything? Okay, sorry, well, welcome.
We forgot, we have live audience.
What's your, what's your analysis? What do you think?
The other two members aren't here, no kidding.